I'd like to call the February 28th School Board Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Conley.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Houser.
Here.
Ms. Hyrens.
Here.
Ms. Nick Oster.
Thank you.
If everybody would rise for our invocation and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Order. Halt. Raise your hand. Halt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Halt. Right. Ace. Trail. Halt. Forward. Arch.
Thank you. Everybody, please be seated. I would like to thank our North Stafford High School, JROTC, with our cadets Matthew Fraelen, Nathaniel Lumpkin, Brittany Brookover, and Lourdes Trudillo. It's always wonderful to have our students here and be part of our evening. Next, moving on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or removals? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our recognitions. Ms. Egan, I would like to recognize you for our Social Work Appreciation Month.
Okay. Proclamation. A proclamation to designate March as Social Work Appreciation Month, whereas March is recognized as National Professional Social Worker Month and is an opportunity to recognize the work done by our dedicated and experienced school social workers. Whereas our school social workers work diligently to provide students and families with basic needs such as food, clothing, financial assistance, mental health services, and medical services. Their work is often done behind the scenes and is confidential in nature, but it is always approached with the intent of recognizing the strengths and potential of the children and families they serve. Whereas, school social workers also assist school personnel and families in social and emotional support, prevention and intervention services, assessment and identification, counseling services and crisis intervention, consultation, collaboration and advocacy, family and community services, promoting educational equity, reducing barriers to learning, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the School Board on this 28th day of February 2017, the School Board hereby designates March as Social Work Appreciation Month.
And I'd like to thank our social workers for coming this evening. Thank you all for everything that you do. Thank you. Our next proclamation will be read by Mr. Conley. I will not ask you unless you would like to sing it.
No.
No.
Mr. Conley. Proclamation to designate March as the Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in Our Schools Month, whereas arts education enriches the lives of countless people through arts programs in our schools and acknowledges the art as a powerful tool to unlock the potential of the whole child, and whereas arts education is a critical component of the learning process and develops students' creativity, self-discipline, and critical thinking abilities, and whereas research indicates that students with more arts education have higher academic achievement across the curriculum, and whereas the importance of arts education is recognized as being necessary for the full development of all children, and whereas Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in Our Schools Month are special opportunities for our community to engage in the ongoing process of arts education and bring a heightened awareness to the importance of arts in education, now therefore be it proclaimed by the School Board on the 28th day of February 2017, that the School Board hereby designates March to be observed as Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in Our Schools Month. The School Board takes its opportunity to urge all citizens to take an interest in and give full support to the unique contributions that quality school arts education programs provide for children, adopted by the Stafford School County Board on the 28th day of February 2017.
Do we have any of our music, art, or theater teachers here this evening? If so, I would love for you to stand. You're hiding. Okay. Anyway, we thank you all for that. I see all the plays and musicals getting going at the high school, so we'll look forward to May when all those performances occur. Next, we will move on to citizen comment. At this time, I do have some that are already signed in. What I will do is I will go through the opening of what's expected when you come in to address the board. I will then call out names from those who have already signed up. That does not mean any others cannot come up and comment. What I do ask is then, after that, you will come up afterwards and I'll invite you all to come up. So let me just go over the three-minute rule and other things. Speakers this evening shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. You will see we have the green, yellow, and red. When yellow comes on, you have one more minute. When red flashes, you have five seconds to wrap up so that we can move on. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the whole board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. So I'm going to read off the first, actually, seven names that I have as signed in. If you would like, if you would line up to the side so you don't have to climb over, that would be great, so you can come one right after the other, and then I will open the floor for anybody else who would like to speak. So I have first, Robin Hayes, then Stacy Sykes, Jeanette Hernandez-Guionay, Luli Steeman, Meredith Steeman, Brett Downs, and Unsa Gari. If I have completely messed up your name, my apologies. Go ahead, Ms. Hayes, you can come on up.
Good evening. My name's Robin Hayes. I'm in the Hartwood District, and I'm a school teacher at Brookpoint High School. I would like to bring up the subject of the 504 plans that are used in our county for children at all levels of the schools. I'm a general education teacher. I'm at the top level of the pay scale, so I will not see much increase for the next several years of my teaching career. Plus, I supplement my salary by working three extra school jobs. I'm the senior class sponsor, I'm the activity bus coordinator, and I sell home tickets for every home game all season long from August until June. It seems each year, teachers are receiving more responsibility to tackle for minimum pay increases. Hence, my concerns are questions to be addressed to the board. Do you realize that core teachers give up planning time to remediate students that have not passed an SOL course? And if you did realize that, now you're asking us that there's a possibility now we're going to have to be in charge of 504s. We're going to be case managers. Was this a transparent decision made amongst individuals at the county level with no general education teacher amongst individuals at the meeting? Will teachers be trained on how to run a 504 meeting, or even to how to write a 504 plan? And if so, please don't let it be before, let it be before school instead of the Teacher Work Week of August. High school teachers only have one day to get their classrooms prepared. Will there be a stipend for the teachers that take on 504 plans? When will this so-called plan of teachers be in charge of 504 plans to be implemented? Will it be next school year, two school years away? The biggest question we have, who is going to set up the annual meetings for the 504 students? With the responsibilities of being, when will teachers have time to contact about the meeting? When are teachers supposed to have the meeting? Before school, planning, after school? Who needs to be at these annual meetings? Parents? General education teachers? If so, how many? A counselor? A special education advisor? An administrator? How are we supposed to get all of those together within a certain amount of time, within a year, for these students? And what happens if there's a legality issue? Who's going to be at fault? General ed teacher? Because that already falls on us right now for our SOL scores. Please consider, thinking about who's on these committees and who makes these decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have.
Hi, my name is Stacy Sykes. I live in Autumn Ridge. And good evening. I'd like to speak to you about Autumn Ridge and the Colonial Forge High School redistricting. My husband and I, with our three boys, have lived in Stafford since 2013. We moved here from New York, and like many of my neighbors, we were relocated here because of a job. We decided on Autumn Ridge for two reasons, and two reasons only. The schools and the neighborhood. Winding Creek, HH Pool, and Colonial Forge High School were all rated very high on Great Schools.org. As well, they were endorsed by my realtor and my husband's coworkers. The neighborhood was equally important. Our boys were moving from a place they had called home for seven years. We did not choose any of the newer developments that were available in 2013 because we wanted a well-established neighborhood. We wanted families and kids to already be there, so our boys would not have to hope for kids to move in next door. We wanted, sorry. Autumn Ridge was the perfect fit. Great schools and a great neighborhood. Many of my neighbors have moved here under similar circumstances and chose Autumn Ridge for the reasons I just outlined. However, I have many neighbors that built their house in Autumn Ridge. They chose Autumn Ridge when Stafford was an up-and-coming area and only two high schools existed. They invested in Stafford with the purchase of their home, their commitment to this community, and their commitment to the schools. And since 2013, my family has done the same. We support all the schools our boys attend, and we are looking forward to our oldest attending Colonial Forge High School in two years. My family considers Colonial Forge High School our neighborhood school. Our boys have attended their soccer and wrestling camps, and we have contributed financially to Colonial Forge when their students have knocked on our door. I know the board has some difficult decisions to make in the next few weeks, but with all due respect, Autumn Ridge should not be a difficult one. That decision should be an easy one. Autumn Ridge should stay at Colonial Forge High School. We, my family and my neighbors, have invested in Stafford, and we invested in our schools, and we should be afforded the opportunity to attend the high school that we consider our neighborhood school since it opened in 1999. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Jeanette Hernandez-Guionay. I live at 7 Fireberry Boulevard, and I'm here to represent Autumn Ridge, the subdivision that I live in as well. I'm here tonight to please ask your reconsideration for the redistricting. As like the previous speaker said, Stacy, when we moved here for a job, I considered the schools. My daughter is a special needs child, and the school was a very important matter to me, and Colonial Forge, HH Pool, and Winding Creek rated very high, and that's why I chose the neighborhood. And as a special needs child, I'm sure you understand my daughter needs the resources, and Colonial Forge is currently providing her the resources that she needs to be a productive member of society and have a successful education. I would like to ask the board if they considered, I'm sure you've considered all things, but why are some children being bused from Route 17 to Colonial Forge? And it appears, and I know that you're not the development of this county, but it appears that because of their poor planning of all these houses popping up, now we face an overcrowding situation, and why should our subdivision be penalized with redistricting and moving our children from a school that they've gone for years? So I respectfully ask that you reconsider your decision, and I would be very grateful if you could keep my daughter and all the children in the neighborhood at Colonial Forge and the other schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The purpose for, oh, my name is Luli Steeman, sorry, and I live at 6 Fireberry Boulevard in Autumn Ridge, and we have lived there since 1999. I am here to submit a petition from Autumn Ridge. I am going to read the petition. I'm a little nervous, sorry. The petition reads as follows. This is a petition in support of Autumn Ridge students continuing to attend Colonial Forge High School, our neighborhood school, for the long term. The purpose of this petition is to show unity among residents and students that currently attend Colonial Forge High School or will attend Colonial Forge High School in the future and live within the Autumn Ridge neighborhood. For the following reasons, the Stafford County School Board should support leaving Autumn Ridge students attending Colonial Forge High School for the long term. Number one, Autumn Ridge's connection to Colonial Forge High School, our neighborhood high school. Students from Autumn Ridge have been attending Colonial Forge High School since 1999. Autumn Ridge is a plank holder with Colonial Forge High School and has a longstanding relationship with that school. We are deeply invested in Colonial Forge High School and love the school, Colonial Forge High School. Colonial Forge is our neighborhood high school. Autumn Ridge has supported Colonial Forge through countless volunteer hours, donations to school organizations, regular attendance in support of sporting and other events, and moreover, through many years of tax dollars to support and make Colonial Forge High School strong. This has been a long-term investment in our children's future. The school ranking is my second point. The School Board proposal for redistricting Autumn Ridge away from Colonial Forge High School will move our children away from the highest-performing high school in Stafford County. The distance, Autumn Ridge is physically closer to Colonial Forge High School than any other high school within the county. Number four, community equity and home values. School reputations influence property values, and redistricting may have negative effects on Autumn Ridge home values. Many in Autumn Ridge have long-term investment in the neighborhood, and substantial community equity will likely be lost if students are transitioned away from Colonial Forge High School. Small community size, the small number of Autumn Ridge residents, which I believe it's 24 next year, will be attending, will not have an impact in the enrollment. It's insignificant when compared to the total number of students needed to significantly affect the desired outcomes for long-term high school populations and redistricting targets within Stafford County. Therefore, we support the proposed redistricting options that leave Autumn Ridge students attending Colonial Forge High School for the long term and not shifting them to North Stafford High School. And if you please, we have several residents here. If you would please stand, whoever's here from Autumn Ridge.
Thank you. If you give that to our clerk, that'd be great, and she can send that out to us.
Hello, my name is Meredith Steeman, and I live in Autumn Ridge. I am 12 years old, and today is my birthday. I am here today because where I go to school is important to me, and I want to go to Colonial Forge High School. My sister is a freshman at Colonial Forge High School. In three years, when I'm a freshman, she will be a senior. I want to attend Colonial Forge with her on her last year of high school. I want to be on the same cheer squad with her. I want to play my violin at the same orchestra concert as her. My sister loves attending Colonial Forge. I don't want her to be sent to North Stafford. She will be heartbroken. I've had so many fun, I've had so much fun attending the Colonial Forge football games. It'd be hard to imagine her cheering for another school. I'm looking forward to being reunited with good friends that I thought I would see in high school if you redistrict my neighborhood. I'm not just a number on a sheet of paper. I'm a kid who loves my neighborhood and wants to go to the same high school that we always have been going to. I'm very upset that all this is happening. I am worried, and so are my friends. I love my neighborhood, and I have always lived in Autumn Ridge, in the same house. We have always gone to Colonial Forge. Other neighborhoods are closer to North Stafford than we are. I'm not saying that I want them to be moved either, because I have friends who live in those neighborhoods. Please remember me when you vote on redistricting. I'm a kid, not a number. The families and the kids from Autumn Ridge helped make Colonial Forge the great school that it is today. We deserve to stay at our school. I love Colonial Forge High School, and I want to stay at Colonial Forge High School. This is important to me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mohammed Gori. I'm sorry I was not prepared for a written, you know, statement, but I just wanted to have some comments that we came here from Fairfax County, one of the best school systems in the country, as you know. And the only thing we were looking, that which school district that we need to go to. And I asked my kids, I asked my children, because they were ready to go to high school from, you know, from Middle, and basically, that was the number-one point that we were looking at, that which school district in Stafford is best for us. And realtor, basically, they tell you that this is the best school system, and the neighborhood that you're buying the house from, and this neighborhood is in that school system. That is the only reason we bought that house. And now, basically, we are heartbroken that we are hearing all these things, and as a matter of fact, I just had questions from the board, that how many board members live in those districts? There are questions right now. There are being, you know, redistricting. How many board members are here who live in those neighborhoods?
We don't answer questions during.
So that was basically my comment. We would love to stay here, and I like to have my children go to the same school. My other two children, they are in middle school right now, HH Pool, and they are ready to go to Colonial Forge. There's a rule, I think it's called a godfather rule. Under that, I don't know, they are thinking about that if they're going to go to Colonial Forge, or they're going to end up in North Stafford, so we are just confused. So we'd love to have you decide that, have that, the Colonial Forge as my kid's school for the high schoolers.
Where do you live?
Autumn Ridge.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I assume, Mr. Downs? Is that okay? If anybody else would like to speak, if you would like to just get up from your seat and start to line on the sides, that would be great. Thank you. Sorry.
Now, I had wanted to start before all of our social workers left, to thank them for the great work that they do. It's an ungrateful role, and it's very difficult. It's oftentimes working with very challenging families, and I commend you guys for recognizing their work, and I commend them, if any are still here, for the great work that they're doing. I also don't envy you guys in your situation of constantly having family members come up and complain and whine, and teachers, and everybody wants more, right? Everybody wants what situates them. But I am, my name is Brett Downs. I am from Autumn Ridge, and I do want to talk about the redistricting. I have four points that I had wanted to make, was the distance, the community involvement, the school rankings, and the why, of course. The distance, if you look at the closest neighborhoods that are all being evaluated and judged for the redistricting, the Colonial Forge, Liberty Knoll, Augustine, Autumn Ridge, Emory Mills, three of them are being considered to be moved outside of Colonial Forge. I think that's really, really ridiculous when you have people who are attending the school who are on the other side of Route 1, you have people all the way down on Route 17, they're coming all the way up, and yet you're going to move three of the closest physical neighborhoods to the school away from that school. That's not right. The boundaries don't make sense, and here's the irony of it. My wife and I were talking because we joked about this, right? If we wanted to move into Colonial Forge boundaries, where would we move? We moved to Autumn Ridge to go to Colonial Forge. We moved to Autumn Ridge because we wanted to go to Winding Creek Elementary. They're two awesome, great, great schools, and the teachers there and the staff are doing a tremendous job. We've gone to all, we go to their, all the events, as many as we can. We have our community involvement. Our kids absolutely love basketball, volleyball, football. We're going to their camps. We're getting to know the coach. We're getting to know the people, right? You're taking that from us, and again, that's not right. So for school rankings, SchoolDigger, which ranks the high schools in Virginia, provides us with the following information. Colonial Forge is the 39th-ranked school in the state of Virginia out of 320 schools. Mountain View is the 43rd out of 320. North Stafford is 114th out of 320. To take it further, there's several other rankings, Great Schools, Redfin. Colonial Forge is ranked A out of a 10. North Stafford ranked 5. We didn't move here to go to North Stafford. Nobody did. That school needs work and needs help. And the last thing that I want to say is, it's been on record, that a member of our School Board record said, who's from Garrisonville, who said, "As long as Austin Ridge isn't relocated, I'm fine with that." Well, if North Stafford isn't good for Autumn Ridge, Austin Ridge, then it certainly shouldn't be good enough for everybody else to be relocated to it for.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Tracy. I live at 25 Wild Plum Court in Stafford, Autumn Ridge, and I'm here about the redistricting. Last time I spoke to you folks, I happened to mention that I was from Davenport, Iowa. I didn't mention which year those schools did. I was a sophomore in 1959. We won 633 system. I graduated with 400 students in 1962, because we had split the schools my junior year. It happens, but the thing about it was, maybe it's only in the Midwest, I don't know, but students that lived in the east side went to Central High, the students that lived on the west side went to West High. Now I understand there's a north, and I think there's another one now because the area continues to grow. Here in North Stafford, it's not the best. We've lived here since 1998. We came down to this area because we wanted a nice, single-family home from a townhome, and we wanted to live in a wonderful neighborhood that had wonderful schools. We found it in Autumn Ridge, and we moved in, and we've lived here for 20 years, almost, 19 now, I guess, we're on our 19th year. And we love it. We love the area. And I support the students and the families that go to Colonial Forge. I give to that school, even though I have no children in that school, because I support my community, and I think that's very important. You have to support your community. Now, if you're going to take that up and rip us out of there and put us to North Stafford, which is not as good a school, doesn't have the same things, that's just plain wrong. Plus, how many students, how many actual students are you actually moving? I heard that Garrisonville is talking about 300, but actually, less than 75 are from Autumn Ridge, and the other And the others, if this were a computer class, I would call vaporware because they're not here yet. So where are they gonna go to school? They can go anywhere. You can put them in other schools because they're not in any school right now. There's nobody that's bought the homes yet. So why move an established community from Nor, from Colonial Forge to North Stafford when they've been here for over 19 years? That's just plain wrong. I'm sorry, 18 years. My wife's the math one. I do English. Okay. Looks like I got not much time left, so I'll wind up. Don't move us. Just don't do it. It doesn't make good common sense. Thank you.
My name is David Curvin. I'm, live in the Embry Mill neighborhood. I wanted to talk to you regarding the redistricting, just like the theme that's going on this evening. And I've actually spoken before, but I want to really do everything I can in my power to exhaust all the options that a citizen in Stafford can do when situations like this arise. Just want to highlight a few things that have probably already been highlighted, but just to try again, just to see if the board would consider. Thinking about Embry Mill is not just newly established, but we're just as established as many of the other neighborhoods because you have a lot of the same military and, and such that move into these neighborhoods and they're making the same choices. The biggest difficulty for me is, I was a Stafford resident before I moved to Embry Mill. And I made the choice of Embry Mill given the, obviously, what it offered, but also mainly because of the schools. And so by doing everything that you should do and doing the, getting the research and doing what you should, the next you know, everything's being turned on its head. I mean, respectfully, Superintendent Benson, you said at the last meeting when I spoke that there was a, almost like a, you didn't say branding problem, but you did say basically there's an issue with North Stafford and how it's perceived and how, you know, that needs to be addressed. But the problem is, that won't address the housing value that's gonna drop for us in this neighborhood. When we actually did everything we could, we helped establish all those parks, all these things that are around there that we paid a premium price for. And as soon as something would change to, to North Stafford, no matter what, the issue is, that will affect us financially, it will affect the kids educationally. These are things that are real issues, not something that we need to address later on or on the way. These are real issues now. As soon as that was to happen, it would affect the housing value immediately, regardless of how we want to be perceived. Just, I understand that North Stafford has to be, obviously, they need more people, but have we talked about St. George's Estates? Have we talked about Alple Grove? Other neighborhoods that are, that are based off of 610 that are not even being brought up? Lastly, it seems like obviously most of the options are, if not all the options, are basically split in Embry Mill with the north and south. And obviously, that wouldn't be my first choice, but the first, my first request would be obviously to keep the south, obviously, with Colonial Forge since we were the people that invested and made these decisions, given the information that we had. If you were at least moving to the north side, when it comes and when it house, you would have information knowing that it's districted to North Stafford. So no one, the housing values would be settled, at least, given that information. But us, we really bought Colonial Forge housing. We bought and paid that premium price and I really, really wish someone would consider that. It's, it's, because if not, a lot of lives will be damaged. Thank you.
Can you sign in?
Sure.
And I'm sorry, the gentleman before, if anybody who signs up, who comes up afterwards, if you would sign in on the clipboard, right behind you. Thank you. If we have another speakers, come on forward.
Good evening. My name is Robin Hawkins from Autumn Ridge. Obviously, I am here to plead for the redistricting and to keep my children, my junior and my upcoming freshmen, in the Colonial Forge area. I'd also like to advocate for the families that could be affected by the high school redistricting. I would like to discuss the transfer policy that is also on the agenda for this evening. I'd like to plead for revision to the proposed language regarding the siblings not being allowed to transfer into a closed school with, even if they're provided, they have provided transportation. The proposed language will tear families apart, forcing parents to choose between their children. I know a few of you and I know a few of you have children that are close to my children's age or they are my children's age and I plead to please put yourself in my shoes and to consider how you would handle and how you would feel if you had to split your children between two separate high schools. As for the redistricting, yes, I realize there's a magic number to meet, but is anyone taken into consideration, which you probably have, the children that would volunteer to transfer out of Colonial Forge and to attend either North Stafford or Mountain View of obviously providing their own transportation? I would like to also plead for the children currently attending Colonial Forge, my junior, to be grandfathered in to stay at Colonial Forge, obviously, with considerations for their siblings as well. I'd like to stress that if there is no consideration for siblings, you will be doing the following, at least affecting me personally, would be tearing, you know, my family apart trying to choose, forcing parents to choose one child over another. Which teacher conference do I attend? Which child is more important? The added burden of transportation for my rising freshman, for any extracurricular activities or school activities, obviously having two children at two different high schools. The families are gonna need to make additional arrangements instead of having my older sibling be my transportation. Forcing families to decide which school to support emotionally and financially, forcing families to support a school that they don't have any equity in. I would also like for you to understand the added expense you'll be adding to the redistricted Stafford County residents. Personally speaking, my family's already invested and donated over $1,000 for my rising Colonial Forge freshman to participate in the programs that he participates in, his eighth grader. And as being a future Colonial Forge Eagle, that will now go to waste, they'll still support the school, which is great, but it does nothing for my family or my son. My family has donated and invested thousands of dollars for my daughter's athletics, supporting school boosters, athletic and educational programs. By redistricting, I will lose that vested equity. I'm speaking as a mom and as an Autumn Ridge resident and pleading for Autumn Ridge and establish Colonial Forge neighborhood not to be an option for redistricting. Thank you.
Can't miss me. Got there. So, my name is Claire Townsend. I live in Embry Mills, South Embry Mill. I have attended all school board meetings related to redistricting since this issue was raised to the public. Again, you can't miss me. As a parent of a current Colonial Forge student, as a board member of their PTO, as a parent of a rising ninth grader and a sixth grader, this redistricting immediately affects me. As a homeowner of Embry Mills, this affects my neighborhood and as a voter, this affects my community. I have four points and I'll be very brief. I've seen all the options. I've got together and discussed where these options will lead my neighbor to the future. And the numbers and projections for the additional high school age students don't, our projections don't equal yours. As we've watched the surrounding neighborhood students and parents, drivers and Stafford County school buses cut through our neighborhood to reach Mine Road faster, we are immediately concerned with the transportation routes that are gonna be affected. We're immediately concerned with the impact of the roads and again, the safety of our children. I had a bus driver yell at me the day of the day and he cut through our neighborhood to get to Mine Road faster. Ideally, we would love to stay together as a neighborhood, but we realize we cannot defend part of our community that is not yet here for the benefit of those who are here now. We request that option number seven be rejected and South Embry Mill to stay at Colonial Forge. I personally request that as a board, you wait. Not in regards to the students that you're trying to move to Mountain View, but to the students that you're wanting to move to North Stafford. Wait a year or two. Do as Dr. Benson said, improve your perception, add a new library, make the additions that need to make that school wanted to be moved to by the community. Very nervous. It's so much easier to talk to the PTO board than it is to talk to you guys.
We don't bite.
If the transfer, where it is, okay. You know what? I'm done. I'm done.
You can always bring your notes and give them to our--
You can have them because my printer died, so I'm so sorry. So you get my handwritten notes, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on down.
Sure.
I used to be center.
Good evening. My name is Don McCormick. I'm also from Autumn Ridge. I live on Fireberry Boulevard. My first time addressing the school board. Thank you for what you do. I have been here or over to address the Board of Supervisors. Fireberry's been a popular place. We have rezoning that's being discussed, so we've been here a lot recently. But anyway, we bought in 99. I was gonna sit on my hands and just watch everybody else, but I thought, you know, I've got a lot vested, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go up there and speak myself. I have two points to make. We had, we put three kids through Colonial Forge High School, Whining Creek, HH Pool, Colonial Forge. We're very happy. They're all, you know, they've all transitioned to adulthood, but, so we're happy with the school and want to see the same for the, our other Colonial Forge neighbors or Autumn Ridge neighbors, that they have the same opportunity. The second thing is, I do want to talk about equity. And since I've been here and some of my neighbors since the late 90s, we feel like we've, you know, built up quite a bit of home equity. I think if you look at the small sample size of Colonial Forge and you pair us with Embry Mill, whose homeowners, no offense to them, don't have not built up a lot of home equity because they haven't lived there that long, then it might be a simple choice to move us. You might say, well, they'd be the least impacted in terms of home equity. But we have just as much vested as a Augustine who's been here, you know, whose kids go to Colonial Forge too, who's built here maybe just as much equity. So all the people that have been here since the 98, 99, the early 2000s, we have just as much invested as them. So, so just by you pairing us with somebody else that doesn't have equity, thinking that that might not, you know, be as big an impact, well, for us, it's just as big an impact. So I want North Stafford to come up to Forge. I don't have anything against them, you know, but they're not. And so for us as homeowners that has kids have already been through the school, that's the number one issue, is, you know, when this redistricting goes about, how much is our homes gonna be worth? You might say that you don't want us to say that or think that or think that everybody's equal, but that's just not true. So I hope that you'll reconsider. I hope that you'll leave Autumn Ridge where they are, going to Colonial Forge, and then maybe you'll move somebody else who honestly doesn't have as much community equity built up, you know, and won't be as adversely impacted. Thank you for your time.
You'll sign in. You get to speak and then you get to sign in, if you can, right there.
Good evening. My name is Chris Wemple. I'm a resident of Autumn Ridge. I'm here representing myself and my neighbors. And I want to point out, just to echo the sentiments of a lot of folks who've been here, they've spoken to very, very salient points, especially about equity and investment and time, blood, sweat, tears in their children attending Colonial Forge. I do not think it makes a lot of sense to move the neighborhoods, especially that are physically closest. You don't have to think that far back. When I first moved here, the first thing that struck me was, I love that the nature of the schools we are going to. The other thing that scared me was the nature of the roads and you don't have to go that far in the political environment to touch one of your compatriots who's been touched by the dangers of traveling Stafford County roads. Ladies and gentlemen, please think about your redistricting plan in which you force students who self, who drive themselves and your bus drivers to travel some of these roads. The longer these travels are, the increased risk to their health, safety and well-being and it has side effects that travel further on. It is not necessarily, I mean, it's just the reality of it, we're kind of in the middle of a choke point. Quantico to the north, Rappahannock River to the south, and traffic here is, well, just pleasant. But our children travel on this and so think about that. Think about that clearly. I also implore that every time the County Board of Supervisors wants to add more people, that impacts you all. But when we sat up as a community and fought against what appeared to be a poorly thought out development of close to 100 homes to make somebody else vary a whole lot of money, but dump all the infrastructure issues on you and on the sheriff's office and on the fire department and everywhere else, that you need to speak up and point out, you know, slow your roll, folks. You're crushing a school system that is struggling to catch up. And unless there's intelligent planning that includes provisions for you all to seat these children, because they will be coming here with children, that's just the reality of it. I've got 24 years of child, of child school years in our systems. Two kids through Whining Creek, Pool and Colonial Forge. My senior's about to graduate. That doesn't mean I'm now divested myself of the problem or that we are letting go of it. In all seriousness, you have to pay attention to all these parts of it and consider big pieces of this. The, the children, there needs to be a school in South Stafford, but the children in the southern part of this county are driving down an amazing distance of harrowing roads, sometimes in the dark, to get to and from where they're going. So think about that as you're doing your redistricting. Forge, the neighborhoods like Autumn Ridge and the close-in should stay with the school that's in their neighborhood. That just, I mean, that's common sense. You don't need to gerrymander your districts. This needs to be something sensible. I thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Good night.
If anybody else wishes to speak, if you want to go ahead and start to line up, that would be great.
Good evening. This, my name is Barbara Rice and I two live in Autumn Ridge, 5 Silverthorn Court. I've already spoken several times and I've been somewhat passionate. Tonight, I, I came late. I just got off of work and I feel a little disconnected because I wanted to speak about the workshop. I attended that. I listened in until you all dismissed. And I, I really felt like you came to that table unprepared, like you were just gonna throw numbers out and just pick out APUs and see how it affected the numbers. I honestly thought that you'd all had probably a plan or maybe you do have a plan, but you were not willing to jump right out and state what it was. Seems like Autumn Ridge is the one that everybody wants to slice out of the pie to move because either they're thinking that the area is closer to North Stafford or they think that the feeder school of HH Pool is considered stronger. But looking at the feeder school, all the middle schools are feeder schools, to more than one school, one high school. So you can't just go by that. And everyone in my neighborhood, that's HH Pool, I have one child in HH Pool and I have two at Colonial. They are all planning on going to Colonial Forge, like their siblings or others. We did cookie sales, talking to everyone, all of their children went to Colonial Forge. Autumn Ridge has had a huge dent in what's made Colonial Forge, the statistics in its, in its test ratings and its athletic ratings. I feel that Autumn Ridge has really put a lot into, invested a lot into Colonial Forge. They see that as their neighborhood school. They talk about it, they, it's, it's their fans of that school. To ask them to change because you feel that they can be easily cut out. Where, what about APU 163? I heard that several times, but I heard Chairman, and nothing wrong, Madam Chairman, but I heard you state that you had reasons, that you didn't state what the reasons were, where you did not want to add 163 to some of the options. 163 hits the numbers perfectly if you cut out Liberty Knoll. And by the way, they're right in the backyard of North Stafford, like two stop signs. You don't even have-- don't even have to go on any main streets. There are a lot of things to look, look at, and I hope that you're looking at all of it, not just, you know, the fact that you can cut Autumn Ridge out, and then, and the people who aren't even in Embry Mills yet. I think there are definitely developments that need to be looked at, like the new Winding Creek that's gonna be coming up anytime in the next, you're looking at four to five-year projection, they're gonna be coming up. And they too are gonna need to probably go to some school, and again, they're in the backyard of North Stafford. So anyhow, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Teresa Thompson, serving as President of Stafford Education Association. I'd like, I have a couple of points for this evening. The first one is I'd like to discuss the present plan for assigning at least five, four, five oh four plans to general education teachers to monitor and support and handle. One of the first concerns that teachers and S E A had when we first started hearing about this plan, was that there was a committee formed back in July that had administrators, guidance counselors, special education, central office staff, but did not include any teachers, did not include any general ed teachers. But the result of that committee affects those general ed teachers the most, because you are adding quite a bit of work to those plates of those general ed teachers without them having any input in it at all. You are also not removing anything off of those plates of those general ed teachers. We already have a turnover rate of approximately 300 teachers a year. What do you think is going to happen when you continue to add more and more to those plates, without taking anything off, and without considering any type of pay increases or anything else along that matter? We have a huge turnover rate right now, that turnover rate is going to, to continue to increase, and you don't have people lining up at your door to replace those that are leaving. The second thing that I would like to ask is, we've got several days left over this year from snow days, that fortunately, or unfortunately, ever how you look at it, we haven't used. Counties to the north, Falkir County, have decided to start giving some of that time back to their teachers, to their employees, to their students. I'd like to encourage you to look at that possibility also, could either do it at the end of the school year, like some of the counties are doing. We've got two half-days coming up, right before spring break, and right before Memorial Day, make those a full day. Lot of parents take their students out of school for those days to travel anyway. Give it back to your employees. Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Joan Tracy, I've spoken to you before. I have kind of a twist on what I said before. I'm also from Autumn Ridge. I would like to suggest that the board not do any redistricting at this point, that they consider over the year an actual redistricting instead of gerrymandering, so that the elected board members are not impacted by any of the housing areas that are cherry-picked to be sent to North Stafford. I'd also like to suggest, or drop a little thought, do you know a master electrician makes as much money from wages and benefits as an electrical engineer? Do you know that most of our professional builders, electricians, HVAC, plumbers, contractors, et cetera, just like the rest of us, are aging out and retiring? Do you know there's a big market for people with that skillset? Do you know that some unions give scholarships to send people to college to get contracting majors? Do you know that unions freely educate through a parent, a journeyman, a master, those in their trade? They need a boost up, a magnet school would be really good. You might want to think about those lines, it would go real well on the press, too. Thank you.
I wasn't gonna speak, but there's just a few things I want to say. My name is Ellen Van De Veer, and I reside in Embry Mill, at 416 Apricot Street. First thing I want to say, that just because our residents might live in a new neighborhood, we are not all new Stafford County residents, and I think that's important to point out, because I think people think, it's a new neighborhood, it's all new people, that's, that's not the case. There's a lot of Stafford, long-term, longtime Stafford County residents that moved there. I have written all of you a number of emails over the past month, voicing my concern and offering my opinion and feedback regarding this redistricting issue. I have attended all the scheduled redistricting meetings, and have been heavily involved in my, with my neighborhood and its residents, gathering information and working behind the scenes to make sure that we as a new community are not thrown under the proverbial bus in the process. The Stafford County School Board has a history of quick Band-Aid fixes when it comes to the overcrowding of our public schools. Rarely do these decisions seem to make sense to the average citizen, and this time it appears to be no different. Out of the seven options that the board came up with in the last, last week, North Embry Mill was in six of them, while one option had South Embry Mill included. It was disheartening to see that the board wanted to split up our neighborhood, but I was able to understand the rationale behind it. That being said, there is one glaring problem with how this decision was made. The projected number of high school students that Stafford County Schools came up with regarding North Embry Mill are significantly more than the projected numbers that the developer has. Keep in mind that Embry Mill draws young professional families, the majority of whom currently have young children. As it is now, we only have 46 high school students. By the year 2021, the developer estimates approximately 128 high school students total for both North and South. So what I'm asking is that the board look elsewhere in the county, and I'm not talking about any of my neighborhoods that are around me. None of the neighborhoods around Embry Mill make sense to move to North Stafford when Colonial Forge High School is literally right down the street from all of our neighborhoods. The Garrisonville District is too close, you have so many other options that I think need to be considered before anybody in the Garrisonville District, it just doesn't make sense. And I ask that you all maybe take a little bit more time and relook, and relook at your numbers. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Sign in, please. Thanks. Okay, I'll, I'll ask anybody else wanting to speak. Okay, I don't see anybody rushing forward, so with that, then I will go ahead and close public comments, and we will move on to board member committee reports, I don't know, are there any reports? Irene, no?
Leave her now, I don't think Fab met since the last meeting, as many as we have, but I would remind members and the public that we do have a joint work session scheduled with Board of Supervisors on March 15th.
Yes, yep. All right, if nothing else, then we will move on to superintendent's comments, Dr. Benson.
Madam Chair, no comments this evening.
All right, moving on, welcome Ms. Healy, we're glad you got back.
Thank you, it was a lot of rain coming down from Dallas.
That's right.
I'm sorry, my plane was two hours late.
Right.
Leaving Florida.
Moving on to our consent items, is there a motion to approve consent?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments or removals from consent? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our action item 9.01 regarding student transfers to a closed school. Would we like to have a motion on the table, or is there, is there any discussion?
Motion to approve 9.01?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion or comments?
Madam Chairman, can we make clear to the members of the public that this does not apply to any redistricting decisions that are made, because the school board is specifically discussing exempting siblings who are not currently in the high school. No decision has been made at this point, but any decision that the school board will make or would make with respect to the redistricting would not be...
Impact that policy.
That's right, because the policy says unless, you know, exempted by the school board, or I forget the exact language, but this decision on this policy does not mean that the school board cannot make a decision to exempt or include siblings, you know, in, in future, the closed schools, such as Forge.
I was gonna say that, so thank you for saying that. Any other comments? I know there was some comment, discussion about this, because this does apply not just to high schools, this is for elementary, middle, and I believe last year there were 10 closed schools, we need to start getting that information circulated. If I hear no further comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the fiscal year 2018 budget, I'll make an opening comment in terms of our work session this evening, I thought we got some great work, I will just say for the record, this afternoon at about 5 o'clock, we got the sheets from the state, because they did, I believe, pass their, their budget, which we are still going through and analyzing, and as of right now, the school board will be meeting next Tuesday for a special call, a work session and special call meeting regarding the budget.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to defer this until that special call meeting.
And I think that will be the primary item, is that what everybody agreed?
I don't know, Mr. Fulmer came running down, you all set?
Lots of him. Move to defer.
Move to defer, okay.
Second if needed.
If needed. All those in favor to defer to next Tuesday?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will be seeing you all next Tuesday. Moving on to our information items, we will start with, okay, these are the VRS plans, Mrs. Boatright, I don't know if that is going to be... Can you give us like the Reader's Digest version?
Yes, of 10.01 and 10.102?
Is, with the pleasure of the board?
Yes, perfect. Okay, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Benson, the changes that are proposed in front of you merely make clear that if you are a 12-month employee who receives vacation leave, that you'll work the 12-month employee calendar.
Okay, that makes sense. And, okay, that's great.
That's it.
Okay, good. Any questions or comments? All right, moving on, we will move on to 10.03, and that will, regarding the walk-in freezer at Drew Middle School. Any comments or concerns?
Ma'am Chair, I just have a question, I know...
From time to time, the food services has extra money, and they sometimes help pay for some of the improvements, I know they paid for some, you know, things with the ovens, oh, they're gonna fund this one? Okay, well then, that's no problem at all. Well, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, well, I think we ought to give them recognition as well, for, for what they do, they pay for hoods and those kitchen parts are very, very expensive, you know, in our, in our cafeterias, so thank you to...
So we were able to take that actually off of our list of projects.
Oh, that's great.
Apparently my kid eating a honey bun every morning for breakfast at Drew Middle School has helped getting a new freezer.
They're not as good as they used to be.
That's right. All right, moving on to 10.04, this is regarding a collaborative learning area at Mountain View High School. As I read this, it does come from within the project contingency funds, is that correct? All right, any...
Say helpful to, for us to move this along?
Does that help?
I would move for approval of 10.04.
Second.
I would move to move to...
Move it to action.
You guys know what I mean, move it to action.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, this will be voting to move item 10.04 to action, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This item is on for action.
I move to approve 10.04.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, I just want to say, I'm very glad that we're able to make these additional improvements within the original budgets, I think that's really important, and that our schools are learning from the additions that we're, we're putting in, is what works and, you know, what may be an enhancement, and it's, I'm very glad we're not just doing cookie cutters, you know, all along the way, and particularly when we can keep within budget and, and make enhancements to our, our structures that will help the students' learning, I think it's, you know, it's commendable, so thank you to those who came up with these suggestions.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 10.06, this regards the expansion, no, I missed one, sorry, jumped over.
However, can we discuss 05 and 06 together? They're both the Brookpoint projects.
Sure, we can, we can do that. Let's see, are there any questions concerning these items?
I just did want to mention that the, this was presented to Fab, and Fab was in agreement on the funding strategies for both of these, they're gonna come out of, they're gonna be funded through the contingency fund, construction contingency fund for Brookpoint High School, and some from Colonial Forge.
From the renovation, okay.
From the renovations done at both schools.
And Madam Chair, I would just like to thank the Fab for considering this and thinking it through, we've had some, some things over the past several years cut, and they were safety features, cut from the budget because of money constraints and things like that, so we've got no sidewalks, we've got no way to safely access the fields down there, so the staircase is going to, to help with that, and 10.06 is what I call the parity project, you know, we've got all of our other high schools who have ample senior commons, space, place for them to, to go out and use as learning space, and to collaborate and things like that, so this is gonna bring Brookpoint up to par with the other high schools in that area, too, so thank you.
I feel I need to comment on this, I certainly believe that that safety project is, is critical. I do have some concerns about using $120,000 from the Colonial Forge project, for a project that is not listed on our printout that we had tonight of a prioritization of the projects that have been ranked. So it's certainly not that I don't want the seniors at Brookpoint to have this, I just, we have started this conversation about ranking our projects in terms of need, and I'm not saying this wouldn't rank high, I just, it does give me some cause and, and concern going forward and how we continue to fund these, fund, fund our projects, and I, I do understand, you know, our contingency funds don't have to go back into the school that they are at, however, I do have some concern there.
Madam Chair, if I may just rebut that just for a moment, I kind of have to echo some of what the Supervisor Maurer has said, and some of the other supervisors, that it's not one particular area's money, it's the taxpayer money, and, you know, this, this is a project that has not, this wasn't on my radar screen either, it... it was the staff here in this building and it was requested by the administration at the school, so that's where I'm coming from with it.
And to speak about the, I'm sorry.
Ma'am Chairman, I just wanted to add that when we're looking at some of our schools that are newer than some of our other schools, there are going to be, you know, more needs at some of the older schools in Brookpoint, North Stafford or schools in Point. So I think it is important that we, you know, that we look at this collectively as a school system and as Dr. Benson would say, not as a system of schools. And, you know, in the school system, you know, view, I don't have any problem sharing this construction money. If we've done everything we need to do at Forge, we've gotten the addition, we're, you know, we're on track and as I've seen it, looks good, you know, it's working. I don't have any problem at all in shifting that money to, you know, another school that could need this. And really, I doubt that, you know, $100,000 for a senior project is ever going to get to the top of a list, you know, when we're, when we're looking at everything we have to do. But as Ms. Egan said, from a, from a parity standpoint, you know, it's important. I mean, all our students, when they go in as a freshman, they're just looking to be seniors and, you know, it's just one of those things they get to do. So I, I think it's important. I'm glad we're doing that and I'm particularly glad we're going to be doing that walkway because I remember maybe eight years ago when my daughter was in middle school going to track meets and things over, you know, at, you know, Brookpoint and, man, that was quite a hike, you know, and I mean, it's like downhill, uphill and the poor senior citizens, some of us are getting there. It would be hard, hard to do it. So I'm, I'm really glad we're doing, you know, we're doing number one, 10.05 with that construction, but I'm, I'm also happy that we're able to fund this for the seniors because I want all our schools to have, you know, the equal, you know, access. And they're, they're not going to be the same, I'm not asking for a cookie cutter, but, but they should have essentially the same, you know, opportunities. And when we're talking about, you know, the senior courtyard, you know, some might not think that's important, but as a, as a parent, you know, I think it's, I think it's really important, you know, for our kids, so. And, and I'm assuming we have an adequate one at North Stafford that meets, you know, these same standards. You don't have to tell me right now, but if, if we don't have something at North that meets the standards of these other schools, I think we need to know about it. Thanks.
We also should ask at Colonial Forge of making sure the projects, just, I'm only concerned about the process of how it's...
Oh, I'm, I'm sure. And I'm, I'm sure we would have heard from Forge if everything wasn't done or, you know, done properly.
I didn't go soliciting.
Sometimes we overestimate, you know, in those costs and sometimes we do an especially good job of managing the funds. And when there are leftover funds, then, you know, I, I think it's only, you know, reasonable to apply them, you know, where they're needed in the school system. I mean, I recall maybe, ooh, 15 years or so ago, we used proffer funds to fund a system-wide emergency phone system at Forge. And, you know, those funds should have been, you know, particularly in the district, but it was, it was okay because it affected everybody. So it's not unusual for us to be, you know, shifting funds whether there be, you know, from a construction project or something else.
My only other comment would be, we have talked a lot about Winding Creek and if we end up needing those trailers, we don't have a funding source. And I just, I just am worried as we don't, if we don't rank them. I am not saying I don't want them to have that, it's just I'm consistent with saying, what is our methodology?
To follow on my comments if I could.
I'm sorry.
And Mr. Ryan's not here, but Quentin, you may be able to speak to this. As it was presented to Fab, or my perception of how it was presented to Fab was, the senior court piece was actually a, a part of the original scope of the renovation at Brookpoint.
It's different.
And it's, it's essentially being handled much as an add-on, as a new school, as Stafford High School was for the add-ons when we identified the leftover contingency funding. So this would not be something that was, that would have gone through the process of being presented as a CIP improvement item.
That's correct. It was not an ad alternate on the project, but it was a discussion with the project. Yes, sir, it was. It has been talked about.
But the walkway is a new proposal that was not a part of the renovation, their initial renovation discussion.
That is correct.
So we'll keep them safe.
Okay. That's right. All right. All right. Like I said, I don't want to look like the meanie. I'm at least consistent on how I like, you know...
I understand. Hey, Quentin, this is going to be a summer project. Do we need to expedite this at all? Can...
It would help, definitely, if we do it.
Do you want to do that? Okay.
05 and 06.
Move to, move 10.05 and 10.06 to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move 10.05 and 10.06 to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do believe we should do them individually, though.
Okay.
If, I mean, for more funding.
Sure, sure. Madam Chair, I move to approve 10.05.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move to approve 10.06.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right. Moving on to the CIP. We had our discussion this evening regarding the CIP. I don't think we need to have anything presented this evening unless...
Do we need to defer? Well, no, this isn't for information, right?
Right. I mean, we will probably discuss next Tuesday as well.
Will be on the agenda for the special call meeting.
That was going to be my request.
We could add it to the agenda for the next, for the next meeting. Our original intention is to bring it back to the board on the 14th, but if, if there's further discussion that the board would like to have, we certainly can add it to the agenda for the work session for next week.
I think as a placeholder, it might be worth it. We can always say, we're good.
Okay.
All right. All right. All those items are covered. Moving on to our closed session. Mr. Hironz, can you read us into closed session, please?
Start reading, Scott.
Pursuant to section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.